The City of Milton, come and council to order Wednesday, April 2nd, 6:00 P. M. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Hometown East Hardware, Milton Pigly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Approval of agenda.
So move.
Second.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to post? All right, pledge of allegiance, Ryan, will you lead us? Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action, anybody signed in? There is nobody signed in. All right, mayor proclamation. For um alcohol awareness month. And we also have a proclamation for Arbor Day that I will sign and I won't put you through having to listen to me read those. Approval of minutes, March 18th, 2025.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to post? That motion carries discussion and possible action regarding a request from Stacy's Bev Mart LLC, application for a Class A retail license for minted malt beverage and a Class A retail license intoxicated liquor at 136 Merchant Row.
Well, verifying the safety information. Uh Stacy Hardenstein uh uh doing business at Stacy's Beverage Mart has applied for a Class A retail license fermenting malt beverages and a Class A liquor license for the premise of 136 Merchant Row. Uh Stacy's Bev Mart LLC will be taking ownership of the business. The staff have completed background checks on the agent and everything has come back uh sufficient based on the current ordinance. And the staff does not offer recommendation on the submitted license application. However, if it is approved to have the motion include pending any outstanding charges.
Questions or comments or emotion from anyone?
I move to approve. Hold on one second here, the request from Stacy's Beverage Mart LLC, application for Class A retail license for minted malt beverage and a Class A retail license intoxicated liquor at 136 Merchant Row.
Second. Um.
Pending.
Charges.
I'm sorry, pending any outstanding charges.
It's twenty seconds still.
It it doesn't, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries discussion and possible action regarding the cigarette, tobacco, and electronic vaping license for Stacy's Beverage Mart LLC located at 136 Merchant Row.
Uh Stacy's Bev Mart has applied for a cigarette, tobacco, and electronic vaping device for 136 Merchant Row. Um and staff has completed again the background checks and the agent and they do meet the qualifications. Um we have not received any comments or concern regarding this license application and staff does not re- offer recommendation. However, again, um any pending outstanding charges would be recommended to be included in the motion if approval is is if the council would like to.
Questions or comments? Or discussion about this? How many electronic vaping licenses have, do we have issued in the city?
So currently, anyone who has a cigarette tobacco license also has an electronic vaping uh device. This is also part of the act that was passed into twen- 2023. So currently, the city does not have any, any limitations. Once if a cigarette tobacco license is issued at this point, um they also have the electronic vaping device uh there. Have not been anyone, any businesses have the, have said that they have uh are selling the vaping devices, but the, it automatically goes into that currently because we don't have any prohibitions on it.
So anybody that can sell cigarettes? Can sell vapes? And how many? I guess what I was asking is like, how many do we have of like? The total, do you know what I mean? Thanks. And did, did the Beverage Mart previous ho- previously hold this license to the cigarettes and vaping?
They did, yes.
They did, okay.
And uh currently, there are seven issued within the city limits, so those include Casey's General Store, the Pigly Wiggly, Dollar General, both Quick Trips uh in the Beverage Mart and then, actually, I apologize, that's six because Main Street Market actually took over the Pigly, the previous Pigly Wiggly one. Um so yes, they have all applied for this and that would be in 2024 when this requirement changed. So again, that's the application um that is from the Wisconsin Department of Revenue that's provided.
Any further questions or discussions or comments?
I would make a motion um to approve uh Stacy's Beverage Mart uh cigarette, tobacco, and electronic vaping license pending any outstanding.
Charges?
Charges.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Anyone to post? All right, that motion carries discussion and possible action regarding special event permit application received from the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin for the Milton Youth Try.
The Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin has submitted a special event permit application for the Milton Youth Try event scheduled for June 22nd, 2025. It is a triathlon for youth ages five through fourteen. There are no outstanding fees due to, due at this time from the organization. And the event organizers have requested the closure of High Street between Rainbow Drive and John Paul Road and it will require barricades for the closure. Uh the Department of Public Works has reviewed the request and it s- makes a recommendation that the estimate is going to be less than $500 for the Department of Public Work Services and there are no Police Department Services requested at this time.
Did, did you have any comments on it?
Uh they were added in the memo, uh but we, we can assist if needed. Um but with the closures as the limited time they are and the limited traffic that there will be on that Sunday isn't probably likely that we'll need law enforcement to man the closure since we're not directing traffic. We're just making sure that people aren't going through, but um we can certainly assist with, if needed, by calling another officer in.
So you just, so it says Police Chief recommends putting an officer on John Paul Road and High Street, but are you not gonna do that then?
That was, I can't remember who actually submitted the permit, but that was their notes. And that was something that was discussed initially. And after further review, I made the determination, we could assist, but it's not necessary to do that.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments?
It's my, it, so I'm on the committee, I don't know. Do you guys want me to, do you have any questions that, because I'm gonna recuse myself from obviously voting, but can I, should I, can I stay up here? Do you have questions?
Yeah. Here. Oh yeah, that's true.
I'll make a motion to approve the event application um for the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin for the Milton Youth Triathlon.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, anyone opposed? And anyone recusing?
I am.
Okay, that motion carries. All right, discussion of possible action regarding special event permit application received from the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce for the Pork Roast and Milton Makers Market.
The Milton Area Chamber of Commerce has submitted a special event permit for the Pork Roast and Milton Makers Market. The event is scheduled for August 17th with the setup in North Gridrich Park um starting on August 16th. The, and it will be that Saturday at night at 10:00 A. M. And what the event will be conclude on August 17th at 6:00 P. M. Um the estimated attendance is 500 people. There will be no alcohol served at the event and there's no outstanding fees due at this time. The Chamber of Commerce has requested the use of the community house uh beginning on Thursday. Um so that, and there are no current reservations in that area, so we're, or in the park. Um the organizers have requested the closure of Janesville Street between Madison Avenue and High Street and which will require the use of barricades for the closure and an approved detour. The additional garbage cans, picnic tables, and all other Department of Public Work Services are estimated to be less than two thousand four hundred dollars. There have been no services requested from the police co- Police Department and the Police Department has no concerns regarding the application.
All right, any questions or comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event permanent application from the Milton Neighbor Chamber of Commerce for the Pork Roast and Milton Makers Market.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, good luck at your event chamber. Um, okay, discussion of possible action regarding the special event permit application received from the Milton Historical Society for the Civil War Living History Days.
The Milton House Museum has submitted a special event permit application for the Civil War Living History Days. It is scheduled beginning Friday, May 16th through Sunday, May 18th and beginning at 8:00 A. M. and 6:00 P. M. each day. The event will overall be held in North Gridrich Park with an estimated total attendance of 2,000 people. Uh there's no alcohol that will be served at the event, no outstanding fees. And then the uh event organizers have requested the closure of Janesville Street between Madison Avenue and High Street, which will require barricades and an approved detour. The total cost for the garbage cans, picnic tables, and Department of Public Work Services, it's estimated to be about twenty four hundred dollars. And there are no Police Department Services requested. In addition, there is also a request for an exception to the event assigned banner restrictions for the event. Um so this would be currently, it is no, our ordinance allows for no bigger than three feet in height and no more than a total of six square feet. They are requesting an exception for banners to be two feet by eight feet, three banners. Um and the places would be by the traffic circle of Highway 26 and 59, corner of Highway 59 and Madison Avenue, and then in North Gridrich Park.
And I can speak on that one if need be.
Any questions or comments for Ryan? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the special event permit application for the Milton House Museum Civil War Living History Days.
I would make a separate motion for that, would be the recommendation.
I'll second the initial motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries and that, and Ryan abstained. And um banners.
I'd make a motion uh to allow an exception for perpetuity to the event for the banner size.
There's a motion and a second, anything else on banners? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anyone? Okay, thanks.
And thank you for the behalf of Milton House.
You're welcome. And good luck on your event. Okay, that motion carries. I'm clearing my schedule, but maybe by then I'll be bored.
You'll miss us. You'll miss us.
I will, I will miss all of you. Discussion and possible action on agreement with redevelopment resources for assistance with the comprehensive plan update.
On March 18th, 2025, the Common Council chose redevelopment resources Studio GWA to provide services to assist in comprehensive plan update. The agreement provides for a kickoff meeting and seven tasks outlined in their proposal. This includes that kickoff meeting, internal client consultation communications, reviewing our existing plan, gathering data, analyzing, and illustrate, uh public engagement, update the plan, implement the plan, and plan presentation and finalization. Uh the city is required to update its comprehensive plan at least every 10 years. The last update occurred in 2015. Fiscal impact, the agreement has not to exceed amount of fifty nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-five, which the city has budgeted for. Recommended motion, the city administration recommends approval of the agreement with redevelopment resources.
Any questions or comments, Bill?
I'll move approval of the um, uh let's see, just lost it here. Here we go. Um move approval of the agreement with redevelopment resources for assistance with the comprehensive plan at a cost not to exceed fifty nine.
Nine ninety-five.
Nine ninety-five.
Nine twenty-five?
I'll second it.
Is there a clarification question?
There's a point of clarification, because it says the fiscal impact uh is not to exceed fifty nine, nine twenty-five.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and staff guidance on the zoning code.
The proposed zoning ordinance uh is ready for review. This year and a half effort of the Plan Commission has culminated in this document. City staff has reviewed it and the city attorney has reviewed it. Staff is still working on incorporating recommended, recommended changes by our attorney, but two policy issues remain. On page two seventy-three, section seventy-eight, ten thirteen, sub-two, provides that three members of the Board of Zoning Appeals constitute a quorum, but in section four C, it provides that four votes are required to approve a variance or reverse an order of a building inspector. Our attorney notes that in Wisconsin State Statute sixty-two, twenty-three, seven E, three M, it provides that if a quorum is present, the Board of Appeals may take an action by majority vote of the members present. Our attorney asks you to consider making four C consistent with the statutory requirement. Uh the Planning Commission also did just review this earlier today and have recommended that we go uh follow our attorney's advice on that one and uh allow just a quorum and a uh majority vote of that quorum to pass. Uh second, our attorney also recommends that we discuss section seventy-eight, ten, twenty-three, twelve is a major change in policy. Uh currently, the Plan Commission makes a conditional use permit recommendation to the Common Council. Under the new ordinance, the Plan Commission would issue the conditional use permit. The Common Council would only hear if there was an appeal. Uh and is this the direction the city would like to go? Uh the Planning Commission also discussed this and felt that uh they could make that uh conditional, issue that conditional use permit and if there was an appeal, that could go to the Common Council. I wanted to get a Common Council's input on those two issues. Um and then any other additional questions or discussions on the zoning code, uh would love to hear any questions or concerns that you may have at this time.
A quick question. They uh referenced the second one uh about the Plan Commission and the conditional use permit and the Plan Commission. Is that how it's done normally uh in this area when people have updated their zoning ordinances? Is this how it is commonly or is that a step outside the box and we're doing something differently?
I haven't quite reviewed other people's uh zoning codes on how that is handled. I've seen it handled both ways, but I, I don't know if there's a common occurrence and maybe our attorney can uh speak to that since he represents uh several different communities.
Well, I would say what Paul said is accurate, some, it's not unusual to have the Plan Commission grant conditional use permits. It's also not unusual to have the Plan Commission make a recommendation to the Common Council or Village Board or Town Board to issue the conditional use permit, it's just up to the uh municipality or the governing body how it wants to handle those. You know, whether it feels that that the Plan Commission can adequately handle them or whether it needs some oversight on the part of the governing body. One thing that is unusual is having an appeal of the Plan Commission's decision on CUP to the, to the uh governing body. I've not seen that before.
Where does it usually, the appeal go?
Well, if it would go to, it, it would go to the um Circuit Court on uh, right, writ of certiorari. And that's what it would do if it was, if it comes to the count, right now, that's what if it comes to the council, it goes to the Circuit Court. There's this, in fact, a statute that was enacted a couple of years ago or maybe a year ago that talks about that and there's a strict timeline for filing that uh for writ of certiorari there, which I think is even maybe only thirty days, so.
So. Um. When is the timeline triggered?
It would be uh based on the decision, so under this as, as written, the draft is written, if it was appealed to the um to the Common Council, then it would be thirty days after the decision of the Common Council.
So where does, we have a zoning board of appeals in the city, if I'm not correct, if I'm not wrong, right? Where do they fit into all this?
They.
Nowhere?
Nowhere, yeah.
So part of the conversation, if it, if you were interested in hearing that from the Plan Commission, um is that the state statutes, the way they're written now, it's, it's very difficult to deny a conditional use permit. So that was part of the conversation around plan thinking like um it would be okay for plan to make that decision because I don't think in all the years I've been an elected official, we've ever denied one. But it truly is a council policy, so it's, Plan Commission recommended they do a, if you guys think something different, that's up to you.
And my understanding too, when I was on Plan Commission, that the whole point of us updating and modernizing our zoning code was to have fewer conditional use permits issued, correct? So we didn't run into this in the future.
That is correct and we were removing a lot of opportunities to ask for those conditional permits throughout the zoning code. So it's gonna be an even more rare occurrence.
So it's gonna minimize it more, all right, thank you.
And the reason behind that is there just isn't much leeway to deny a conditional use permit.
And let me just back up here, I have to look. I've, uh you'd asked a question about the Board of Zoning Appeals on a CUP and as this is, as this is drafted, um if it goes to the uh Common Council and uh, that, oh, that's, that's right. That was one of the changes I recommended. Was, was to change the title on there because it talks about a review of, of the action by the Board of Zoning Appeals, but that's incorrect. It's a, it's a review by the Common Council. And so uh then it's, yeah, it's by statute and it's appealed to the Circuit Court under the statute, which is dealing specifically with conditional use permits and, and uh that's by writ of certiorari again, so.
So I'm looking for a motion here, it's just a direction, a motion?
Um a motion on each would be nice to get a direction on uh what to put in our final document.
Plan Commission made, made a motion. They made a motion, yep. And this motion is just about these two recommendations, it's, you're not voting on the whole.
These would be added into the document for the final approval.
You can look at the memo for help.
I'm gonna take a stab at it.
All right.
Okay, um. Make a motion to modify seven, uh section seven, seventy-eight, ten, four C, no, thirteen, four C, to be more consistent with the language that's in seventy-eight, ten point one three two. Does that work?
Dealing with the quorum issue?
Yeah.
Making, yeah, dealing with quorum issue, but they said making uh four C be consistent with.
State statutes?
Yes, state statutes.
Which state?
If a quorum is present, the Board of Appeals may take an ac- action by a majority vote of the members present.
Yeah, that'll work. That'll work.
Okay, it is like a group effort to get this a little complicated? Is there a second? Okay.
I'm following the guidelines from the city staff.
The city attorney.
From her attorney.
The verbiage being that we would make our policy.
All right, so everybody understands what the motion. Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, now we have another one of these to do. For square breathing.
I'm gonna take a shot at this. I move to uh update the new ordinance where the Plan Commission would issue the conditional use permit and the Common Council would only hear appeals.
And sec- in the section.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Want to pose? Okay, that's great, that's awesome. I really feel like Bill and Teresa need to do the rest of the motions.
Um and then I would ask uh if the council has any questions or recommendations through the rest of the document. Um staff has been over this several times, the Planning Commission has been working on this for oh, well over a year. Uh I, I think we've got a, a really solid document here, but obviously want you guys to have a final crack before uh passage at our next meeting.
And at the, at the um, the public open house that we had last week, um it detailed how many meetings that we have had. It's been about ten meetings that we've been, we've had around the zoning code rewrite. So um, you know, interested if there's any comments from council before what will happen after this is, we'll have a public hearing on the fifteenth.
Plan Commission.
The Planning Com- The Planning Commission will have a public hearing, you won't, but the Planning Commission will. Yeah, I, I just wanna say thank you for that. That will go to the next agenda item.
Thank you, everyone.
Discussion and possible action regarding a residential developers' agreement for Red Hawk Farms Fourth Edition.
On February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Milton Common Council and Plan Commission approved the final plat for Red Hawks Form, Badock Farms Fourth Edition Residential Subdivision. The plat calls for the creation of ten new lots along Acacia Lane. Uh the attached residential development agreement outlines the roles and responsibilities of the city and the developer in regards to the proposed development. The city of Milton requires a residential development agreement for each subdivision and/or subdivision phase. The residential development agreement outlines the roles and responsibilities of the city and the developer as it pertains to the proposed development. The subject developers' agreement outlines the sequencing of the development, the city's role in inspections, and the developer's payment in lieu of parkland dedication. There's no fiscal impact to the city of Milton related to the subject developers' agreement as all costs incurred by the city outside of its normal operations would be invoiced to the developer. The city parks will see a payment of six thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and three cents in lieu of parkland dedication. Uh recommended motion, the city administration recommends approval of the proposed, proposed developers' agreement for Red Hawk Farms Fourth Edition.
Questions or comments? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed developers' agreement for Red Hawk Farms Fourth Edition.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? That motion carries self-storage recommendations, discussion. That motion carries, self-storage recommendations, discussion and possible action regarding the salt storage building improvements bid award.
The city of Milton received three bids on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five for the salt storage facility project. Backstrom Woodman has reviewed the bids and provided the attached recommendation letter. And they, uh, the recommended award is to awa- award the contract to Gilbank Construction in the amount of three hundred and eighty-four thousand and nineteen dollars.
So it, there's a comment, our pre-bid opinion of probable cost of this project was three hundred and fifteen thousand? So can you clarify that a little bit?
Yeah, that's the amount that Backstrom Woodman had after they finalized their design. Um, I had in capital improvement pro- plan actually four hundred thousand, so. Um, and this will be included in this upcoming borrowing package as well, some of the finances and, and the stormwater portion, I believe, was budgeted with stormwater utility for this year, so.
Thank you.
Making a motion to award the contract to Gilbank Construction uh for the amount of thirty nine, three hundred and ninety-four thousand and nineteen dollars for the construction of the salt storage facility improvements.
Say it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the Shumway Pond Improvements Bid Award. Can you explain a little bit about why this needs to be done?
The project is the Shumway Pond, which is right here north of City Hall. Uh, it, it's a internally drained area, like, like the majority of Milton's stormwater, and it's not infiltrating, so we're looking at adding a pretreatment basin to the facility to remove sediment prior to it reaching the infiltration basin and then uh draining the current basin and um doing some restoration work to the bottom to improve the infiltration capacity of that basin. Um, again, the bids were received on March thirteenth, uh, three bids were received. Backstrom Woodman has provided the attached um recommendation letter, and they are recommending the award to BKS Excavators in Edgerton in the amount of six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Uh, this will also be included in the uh future capital improvement borrowing that will be presented to council.
Have we addressed some of the safety concerns of this area?
The goal of the project is to make the pond infiltrate the way it was initially intended and designed. Um, when the state highway project was done, there was additional water and some additional work that was done um with the area. And um, you know, over time, these basins do collect sediment and debris and the performance does wane. So again, the goal would be to eliminate the um, or, or I'm sorry, improve the infiltration performance of the, the pond, which would hopefully reduce the amount of water that's located there.
Well, fencing or depth, one of the two, I, you know, it, when we had the i- issue with a child there, um, you know, it kind of left many of us concerned about the, at that time, the depth of the pond and um ensuring that we could rescue that child.
So again, the goal of the project would be to make, make, correct the current pond locations functioning ability with the infiltration so that the water, I mean, there will still be water there, you know, during a rainstorm or after a rainstorm, but the intent then is that it drains away over time. You know, within a few days down to um, you know, much lower than is there, or hopefully not ultimately in the infiltration basin. There's still a, a pretreatment basin that will have some water in it. Um, but again, the, the goal of this project was spurred by those discussions way back as part of the capital improvement planning process to do these improvements.
I mean, I know all retention ponds have the uh ability to become deeper than usual during a storm or wherever we're getting water, but that one in particular was often very deep and.
It still is. Yeah, so.
Okay.
Just curious how deep is it currently, roughly?
Uh, I'd have to look at the plans, I believe the deepest point is around ten to fifteen feet, but I can't remember. I'd, I'd have to, we can verify that if you'd like to know for sure.
That's probably full of water right now.
I know I've seen it max out too, or get pretty close to top of that. Which is quite, quite deep at that point.
Any other questions or comments or a motion? That would be great. Finished up with you and Bill making all the motions.
I would move approval of the um Shumway Pond Improvements uh awarding it to BKS Excavating in the amount of six hundred and ninety-two thousand.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second, a motion by Bill and a second by Teresa. All those in favor say aye? Want to pose? Alright, that motion carries. Um, discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty-five oh nine in support of Clean Sweep.
The city of Milton participates with other communities in Rock County uh to fund the Clean Sweep program. This resolution uh isn't, is the um document or the action that council will take annually that supports the Cle- Clean Sweep program. The Clean Sweep program uses this resolution to apply for grants, to uh also offset some of the costs of the programs that they offer. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we did have a Clean Sweep here locally for residents of the community to use and um, you know, potentially will again in the future. Uh, the benefits of Clean Sweep, it removes um, you know, hazardous chemicals and materials from residents, businesses, and prevents them from being put down storm sewers, wastewater, into the wastewater system. Uh, and, you know, uh allows for a procedure and a location for proper disposal of those items.
I'd move approval of resolution twenty twenty-five oh nine in support of Clean Sweep.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye? Anyone oppose? That motion carries, okay, discussion and possible action regarding appointment to the Milton and Town of Milton Fire Commission. Well, another gift to me. Um, Teresa, or Teresa and Bill are the current members of the, are uh, they're the representatives for us, for the town and the city fire commission, which is still in existence. And when Linda left, she left a vacancy on that. Um, I'm recommending, not that you have to do this, because you all can go to this meeting instead of me, that you put me on there for the last meeting and only because I'm the only one that has any history or knowledge or experience with that group. We are scheduling the final meeting to vote, to dissolve that commission and um divide up the funds as written in our agreement. So, that's my solution. And Eric is free to spend eight to sixteen hours studying the history out of a six-inch binder if he would like to attend this final meeting, or recommend someone else on council to do it.
When is the final meeting?
Well, right now, it's supposed to be like, we're trying to schedule April fourteenth, and, yeah.
So, is it just your position, did you feel that their positions as well?
No, they're still on.
Okay.
They're still on, so it's just a vacancy.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion then, that we appoint uh Mayor Anisa Welch to, for the final meeting to the Milton and Town Milton uh Fire Commission.
Say it.
All those, I'll, I'll stay from the snow. All those in favor say aye? Anyone oppose? Okay, and thank you for limiting it to one meeting, so.
Soon you have the sixteen hours to study.
And that was, that was the minimum, that was me and a guest, like, okay, and a quiz. And a PowerPoint. Um, okay, oh, okay, this is the most fun part of the meeting that I had to save my voice for. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash ten, recognizing and honoring older person Teresa Rouge for public service to the city of Milton. Whereas older person Rouge has dutifully served the residents of the city of Milton as older person during various terms, beginning in two thousand and thirteen. And whereas older person Rouge played a crucial role in the formation of the newly expanded fire and EMS district encompassing two hundred and twenty square miles and serving twenty-five thousand people across Rock, Dean, and Jefferson Counties, ensuring access to emergency services for all community members. And whereas older persons, older person Rouge's dedication extended beyond City Hall, serving as a city of Milton representative to the gathering place, helping strengthen connections between generations and promoting wellness and community engagement. And whereas older person Rouge has been a passionate advocate for enhancing the quality of life in the city of Milton, supporting initiatives to improve public safety, community development, and recreational opportunities. And whereas older person Rouge has served diligently on various commissions and committees, including the Community Development Authority, Public Safety Committee, Ethics Board, Personnel and Finance Committee, Library Board, Tourism Development Committee, and Joint Fire Commission. And now therefore be it resolved by the city of Milton Common Council, on behalf of the entire Milton community, hereby acknowledges and honors Teresa Rouge for her dedicated public service as older person. The council commends her unwavering commitment to community betterment and extends heartfelt gratitude for her active involvement in numerous civic endure, endeavors, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
A second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Anyone oppose? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Resolution two thousand twenty-five eleven, resolution recognizing and honoring older person Bill Wilson for public service to the city of Milton. Whereas older person Bill Wilson has served the residents of the city of Milton as older person beginning in two thousand nineteen with distinction, demonstrating a strong commitment to thoughtful governance and community progress. And whereas during the course of public service, older person Wilson provided valuable insight and leadership as member of the library board, supporting strategic planning, policy development, and community programming that advanced the library's mission to promote literacy, education, and lifelong learning. This service contributed to increased access to resources, technology, and inclusive spaces that foster community connection and enrichment for residents of all ages. And whereas a significant accomplishment during older person Wilson's tenure particularly through service on the Plan Commission, was the comprehensive revision of the city's zoning ordinances, a critical initiative that modernized our data regulations, aligned zoning standards with contemporary planning principles, and enhanced clarity, consistency, and transparency throughout the development of the review process. I was actually thinking about team building, that made me cry. The last team building. Alright, back to you, Bill. Uh, whereas older person Wilson played a key role in the formation of the newly expanded fire and EMS district, which now serves over twenty-five thousand residents across two hundred and twenty square miles in Rock, Dean, and Jefferson Counties, significantly enhancing access to essential emergency services for all communities within the district. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Milton, on behalf of the entire Milton community, that older person Bill Wilson is hereby recognized and honored for dedicated public service and meaningful contributions as a member of the common council. The council extends its sincere appreciation for a steadfast commitment to civic engagement and lasting efforts to advance the well-being of the community. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution.
And I'll second.
All those in favor say aye? Anyone oppose? Alright, that motion carries. So unanticipated.
I have a resolution, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, resolution recognizing and honoring Mayor Anisa Welch for public service to the city of Milton. Whereas Anisa Welch began service to the city of Milton in two thousand and eleven as a member of common council, and in two thousand and fifteen made history by becoming the first woman elected to mayor of the city of Milton. And whereas the term as mayor was marked by heart, integrity, and a steadfast commitment to improving the lives of all Milton residents. And whereas strong support was shown for collaboration among municipalities, most notably through involvement in the successful creation of Lakeside Fire Rescue, a unified department formed through the historic merger of eleven municipalities across Rock, Dean, and Jefferson Counties. And whereas this partnership strengthened emergency response, improved fire and EMS service, and established a sustainable framework to protect public safety throughout the area, an achievement that will benefit the community for generations. And whereas the launch of the annual community picnic fostered community spirit and connection, creating a tradition that continues to bring neighbors together in celebration of Milton's heart and hometown pride. And whereas during Mayor Welch's tenure, the city experienced meaningful growth, innovation, and a renewed sense of identity, unity, and service, reflected in both community initiatives and key leadership decisions that helped shape the city's future. And whereas Mayor Welch was instrumental in the hiring of several key leadership positions within the city organization, strengthening the foundation of municipal operations and ensuring continued progress in serving the needs of the residents. And whereas under Mayor Welch's leadership, the city celebrated the dedication of both the newly constructed City Hall and Department of Public Works buildings, significant milestones that reflect the city's commitment to efficiency, accessibility, and long-term investment in public infrastructure. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Milton, Wisconsin, that Mayor Anisa Welch is hereby recognized and honored for remarkable service, historic accomplishments, and lasting contributions to the city of Milton and the broader region. Approved by the common council of the city of Milton this second day of April twenty twenty-five.
Make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That motion carries. Alright, um, thank you, everyone, and I just wanna say thank you to Bill and Teresa um and Linda. So many years we have been elected officials together, um, lots of great times, a few hardships those first few years, which brought about team building. And I'm just.
And lots of general items.
A lot of general items. And I just wanna say thank you to all of you and to everybody on council, it's been a pleasure like eighty-five percent of the time. Every now and then we have a rough patch, but it's, it's truly been an honor. Um, I am so happy and content with how we're leading the city and the hands that we're gonna be leading the city in. You guys are gonna do great, and your new older people will do fabulous. So having said that, does anybody have any committee reports?
Uh, the Public Works Committee met on the, what was that, uh, March twenty-fifth. I was, aside from approving some plats and things of that nature, uh, the biggest item, I think, was uh, the statement of qualifications for the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, trying to make a decision as to who uh the, we would put forward as a, a a company to move us forward with that, uh, with that facilities planning. Uh, we really couldn't come to a decision uh just in, in that forum. So what we would like to do is have it come to the common council to assist and then, but the members of the uh Public Works Committee agreed to come to that meeting as well, so we could do it jointly, instead of just saying, here's a, a big pile of, and uh go ahead and make a decision, uh, try to do it jointly, because really the qualifications were so similar, it just, we just sort of got bogged down. And it was going nowhere, so that's why I put, I was like, can we just do this in this forum here and move this along? So just so you guys know, that's coming down the pipe here in the next, one of the next couple of meetings coming forward. Uh, other than that, some funding applications, things like that, but other than that, not much, that was the biggest item. some funding applications, things like that, but other than that, not much. That was the biggest item.
Any other committee reports? Staff reports. I know it's been boring the past few weeks, but.
I'll kick things off. Um, I forgot I put in for a grant and I received that grant. It wasn't as large as the radio, but this was through Lion Energy for Public Safety, um, so they will be awarding five hundred dollars and that's going to be going towards, um, crossing guard safety equipment, upgrade our stop signs for them. Um, they're pretty cumbersome, um, and they're a little top-heavy with the lights we've added onto them, so this will help offset some of the costs, because those signs are quite pricey. Um, other than that, nothing else relevant from the PV side of things.
Ashley?
Um, next week is National Library Week. Um, and in light of the executive order that reduces the institute of museum and library services, we're asking library users to come into the library next week and fill out a postcard about why the library is important to them, um, and we'll send all the postcards to our state representatives. Um, so come celebrate the library with us and shout from the rooftops why funding libraries and library resources is very important.
Thank you. Mark?
Uh, excuse me, I don't have a lot to add. The, the, the big item is the, uh, upcoming is the, uh, wastewater treatment plant facilities plan, so, um, that'll be, uh, presentations from the three firms like Ken mentioned and, uh, some discussion to follow, so.
Kelsey?
We are finalizing the seasonal crew positions for DPW. We have offers out to four to fill the crew for the summer. Otherwise, business as usual.
How do you want to go and let Jenny finish it up?
Um, last week we had a, a public information session on our zoning code. Um, I felt it was well attended. We probably had around twenty people show up throughout the day. Really important to get that last push out to the public and make sure what, they understand what we're doing, answer their questions. Um, another interesting thing I did in that involving Lion Energy, obviously Lion Energy has a, uh, a vested interest in seeing businesses locate in their facility, in their service areas, especially if they use electricity. Uh, met with, uh, leaders from the economic development teams, uh, throughout Rock County, Janesville, you know, Beloit, uh, Milton, obviously. Um, with those, uh, with their, uh, uh, economic development team, uh, try and sell Rock County to Lion Energy today, and it was a, a very productive meeting. Uh, they did come into our business park to see what we're doing out there. Um, they were impressed with, uh, what we're doing compared to larger communities in our area like Beloit and like Janesville, so I was, I was really happy with that meeting.
Jenny?
I feel like I just said this, but, um, we, we had an election yesterday. And, yeah, I think it was only about a month ago we said that again. Um, so it went really well. Uh, this was a unique election in the fact that we had a higher than expected turnout. So that was already evident in, um, in-person absentee voting, so we were prepared. We had extra ballots. We had extra, uh, materials. Um, we, we didn't have a lot of extra people available, um, so I really want to thank, uh, first of all, City Hall staff, because everybody had a part they, in that, um, we had, uh, Kelsey, Ashley, Kaylee, uh, we even, we even stole, uh, Carrie from the Department of Public Works assistant who watched our office, so we could do things, um, uh, since we, it, again, it was just, uh, a little, little busy. Um, so just for comparison, and we had two thousand three hundred and forty-five voters yesterday, um, a similar election, which would be two, about two years ago with, uh, we had about nineteen hundred, so again, just a little bit different, so it was a sixty-one percent turnout versus that. It was fifty-two percent turnout at that time. Um, and there is two people I really want to thank, um, besides, we have Public Works, who did a fabulous job of cleaning everything up, so we could have council this evening. Um, but, uh, Mark actually helped set, doing all the setup, um, a lo- last week. And, and so I really, really appreciate that and, uh, Chief Sexy also today, um, to make sure that everything went down to the county and didn't get wet, um, allowed me the use of their garage to pull my car in, so we could get everything in. Um, so again, it's just so appreciative. I'm so appreciative because we have amazing election officials, but we also have, um, amazing staff that cooperates, um, together and, and again, whatever is needed, so I really appreciate that. Um, and then on another note, one thing that I have in our, in my office, if anyone is interested, is I actually purchased the, uh, new Roberts Rules of Order in brief, so if anybody's interested in training, um, I do have that information.
I, I don't know whether, uh, any of you saw the posting that, uh, Lisa Talifson, the county clerk, did about the election. Um, but she, um, shared in terms of the output, uh, or the, the turnout for the election that someone showed up at one of the polling places and reported that this was the first election they had voted in since Jimmy Carter. So, um, there were, there were people coming out of the woodwork.
It was awesome. It was really awesome. Alright, our last team building exercise, which of course, it's what we're, it's actually what the subject matter is of the team building. That made me so emotional and maybe not very much sleep. It is, what is your favorite animated movie? Which one would you already? Your favorite animated movie? Up?
If you don't want one that makes you cry, then, uh, I recommend the Mitchell's Versus the Machines. And I didn't cry, but others people did. I saw.
Mine gives away my age. This is when I had young children and that's the, uh, Landy Fortime. They just loved all of the dinosaurs coming into our home.
I'm gonna share, um, Beauty and the Beast. My young grandson, sometimes the only way I could entertain was by singing and dancing the songs to Beauty and the Beast. Yeah, I know, I know, I know. It was, so, um, that has to be my favorite this year.
I really enjoy The Little Mermaid.
I really enjoy Moana, uh, that just, I love the singing in there.
I was just gonna go with Elf. There's an animated part to Elf that I really, I really like Will Ferrell. That part isn't part of the animated.
Just say that's a marine for ya. Go with Monsters Inc.
I was gonna go with Mitchell's Versus the Machines, but I'll throw out one of the Despicable Me movies. They're, they're fun.
Which is what I was gonna say, so I'll say Minions. I too was gonna go with Mitchell's Versus the Machines. Um, I like Space Jam.
Who framed Roger Rat?
Charlie, did you go? Can go with the audience, because Linda's here. Because she was always someone like, don't forget the audience.
I'm gonna go with Lion King.
Oh, yeah, nice. It's just Mark. Did everybody go?
I'd say any, one of the pool movie.
Audience? Thanks, thanks, sweets. Linda? Alright, your next meeting date for council will be April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.